At Jim if he his roll call as he comes in. Thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, next item on our agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. And I don't know if anybody has any additions or comments to tonight's suggested agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a move. We have a second.
It puts me in the enviables.
I'll give you a second or otherwise I'll do it. All right, so we have a first motion, the first and second to approve the agenda as as presented. All in favor signify of favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. And three ayes, no nays, I guess. All right. Uh, item number three would be approval of minutes of the January twelfth regular meeting. And which are attached in our packet. So there's Mr. James and Balk right there. Oh, that's all right. You know. We we could give you a parking pass, but not tonight. In the summertime, we would, we could say, yes, we understand that parking situation. But I will see if I'm in the right seat. Yeah, okay. So Balk is present. Um, and to catch you up, we have done roll call and approved the agenda and we um. Are looking at the minutes of the January twelfth meeting. And looking to see if anyone has any amendments or corrections. Anything to add to the minutes of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
I did not.
I had read through them. I was, I thought they were fine.
And we were the three here.
I would defer to those that were actually here.
Yeah, you missed that one. So um. I'll make a motion to approve the the minutes as presented for the January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Meeting.
Support.
And have support by Kate. And we need to vote on that? We don't need to vote on just. We haven't voted on that one, don't we? Yeah. So we'll call for vote on that.
Yeah, aye.
So I was thinking of a roll call is what I meant, sorry. Okay. All right, number four, public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any? Any comments, any public comments? We're limited to three minutes at this point in time. Is there? Anyone uh online that raise their hand that would like to make any comments? This time. Okay, um, so we'll close public comment session and item four. And move on to unfinished business, which we, our agenda has none. Which takes us to new business, item six for five ten Butler Street lot coverage. Issue that has been put in front of us. And at this time, um, I would like to ask our zoning administrator to do a review of the application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance to construct an addition at five ten Butler Street. Um, after the demolition of a portion of the existing structure. Uh, which requires a dimensional variance to increase the lot coverage to twenty-seven point seven percent instead of the minimum twenty-five percent. Um, lot coverage requirement. Um, the applicants requesting the variance because they will lose the non-conforming rights that they currently have, uh, which. Is that twenty-seven and a point five percent lot coverage as they demolish a portion of the building on the north side? Um, to build back a portion of the building after demolition, um, even if it's in the same footprint is considered to increase non-conforming lot coverage. Um, however, the project overall in the end is actually only going to add thirty-two square feet um to the building, which would increase the lot covers to twenty-seven point seven percent. Um, the general manager from uh the property is here, present in the room today, and then the uh applicant um. Himself, uh, who is the architect for the project is also on your Zoom meeting and available to present an application for you.
Good evening. Thank you. All right. Well, um.
I I have a question for Ryan, if I could please, Ryan. On page seven, it says a minimum twenty-five percent lot coverage. Wouldn't that be a maximum of twenty-five percent lot coverage?
It should be a maximum.
Yes, correct. You are, that is accurate. Good catch.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and then um. What I'd like to do at this time, I'll call the hearing to order by the chair and have the uh applicant. Present their information or introduce themselves and. Stand up to the podium, if you would.
I'm Jeff West, I'm the general manager. Michael Walker, our architect, will be presenting the.
Michael will be doing that.
I'm here to say hi and be present.
Michael, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, the the um, the gist of our request uh is centered on the. Restructuring of the egress into and out of the the back end of this building. Uh, there was, there were a lot over the years, quite a few ad hoc additions and. And modifications made to the interior corner of this building that. Uh, altogether does not make the building uh work very well, and this. Request uh allows us to consolidate all the the little stairs and the little outbuildings that were kind of attached to the original main building. And allows us to clean it up significantly. Um, none of the uh. None, none of this area is really visible to neighbors, and it certainly isn't visible to the public way. And we've already been in front of the historic review commission to have them review it, and it was approved. We hope that this is a reasonable and rational request and that it's uh that it's approved.
And that, anything else you want to add?
Not really. It's a very small, it's a very small change to the building that will have a very large, you know, effect on the use of the building and. Uh, overall has a better. It's better for life safety in the building, just ingress and egress is improved tremendously, so.
Okay. I'm sure we may have some questions as we get into it, Michael. Might be, might be more meaningful to uh at that time, give us some clarity if if there are some.
Sure, absolutely. And the drawings are all in here, so if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Um, all right. Then um, and then also, is there any public comment regarding the application? That uh, anyone that wants to speak in favor of? In the audience that wants to speak in favor of the. Variance. And other than Michael and Trenton there, I don't see anybody else, right, online? So there's just the two of them. Anyone that wants to speak and opposing? The application. Okay. We do have, uh, we do have a letter. Uh, submitted in writing to us. Uh, from Catherine Simon. And I can go ahead and read that. Uh, Catherine Simon. Well, she owns the Maplewood, so I don't know the address exactly, but oh, here it is. Uh, I guess I don't have her address, but she owns a Maplewood. Um, she says that um. Regarding the construction, in addition to five ten Butler Street, I am writing in response. To the notice sent to me regarding the proposed changes to the Wickwood Inn. Is my understanding that your changes would enhance their ability to better serve breakfast, to guest and improve preparation space. The modification should have no negative impact on the surrounding properties. As area, area is to be rear of the building and already obscured by shrubs, et cetera. I have no objections to the planning, to the planned improvements, the Wickwood Inn has been a contributing business. To the downtown Sagatuck for many years. And I believe that's the only portion that's. That I'm aware of. Nothing else came in?
Uh, yeah, I received a an inquiry from a a neighboring property owner at five twenty-five Butler that was kind of wondering if maybe they were. Uh, any of this on-street parking might be impacted, but um. I provided them with the copy of the plans, they didn't uh write any further response or information than that.
All right. Well. All right, so that takes care of portion D of our public comments. Um. I would like to then um. Go into our deliberation for our zoning board. And have our own discussions, so we'll close the public portion of this. And start off with any questions that any of the board members may have. Come up with by reviewing the packets. And I'm going to start with um. While I think this is a very well-done presentation of drawings. And it is with pop-ups that you could, we could see on electronic files and things. Uh, explain things that were being updated, I would say mostly, or uh removed and and reinstated. So I guess it's my understanding that currently we're. Two point five percent over, we're at twenty-five, twenty-seven point five percent, correct? Um, is the existing building as is. And with the. Amount of changes that goes to twenty-five point seven or twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven point seven, correct?
Twenty-seven point seven. So um, a very fractional change in from was already a non-conforming over the lot coverage. And um, while that does seem minimal, we we want to understand the changes. I had a hard time maybe understanding what was coming off and what was going back on. Uh, from the plan views. And I'm not sure if you guys have anything that could. Share with the board to start with, so we could have more of a visual as to what's, you know, what's causing. What what's going away, what's coming back? And what? What's happening?
If you, yeah, right there, if you look at the drawing on the right-hand side, you see two small uh rectangles. These comprise the covered uh. The covered access to the first floor and the covered access to the basement. These two pieces of uh. Yeah, pieces of the building that came off of there. Come out to about forty-eight square feet. The, if you look at the drawing on the left, you see a rectangle, the total area of that thing is. Eighty-three point nine square feet, uh, if you deduct the forty-seven square feet we had. We're adding a net of thirty-two square feet. Essentially, it's um. It is, it, we'd like, we could have kept it a little smaller, but we were restricted by the location of the basement door. It kind of dictated where the uh, the entry to the basement could be unless we went in. And uh significantly modified the structure in the basement. So. Uh, overall, uh, try, trying to keep a nice, clean footprint and make it. It makes sense.
Okay. So that was on the, on the, on the access to the lower level or basement and stuff, not so much the front porch, right?
No, 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 the front stays exactly as is. Everything that's street-facing is unchanged.
Okay. All right, that helps a little bit, at least we know, understand the areas where they, where they are being changed. Anyone have any? General, general comments about what's been presented to us or any questions?
Well, I think it's. Quite a comprehensive package, and in here somewhere, there are some pictures of what's being removed, photographs.
And sheet A three point one, I believe, or three point zero, I forget which.
It's page twenty-four of our packet. Yeah, if you look in the lower right.
Right, so you can see the the little doghouse, we call it, and the lower right, and just below it, you can see the roof of the access to the. Uh, kitchen, the the existing access to the kitchen. So by placing the, these two together under one roof, which will be the exact same height as the dining room roof. You can see, look, the picture on the lower right, the dining room extends to the north from the building. Um, this will match the slope of the roof of that dining room extension and uh. Uh, you can see. In the elevation drawings how it affects the back of it, but in in no case can you see it from any of the public streets and. Quite frankly, even if you were a neighbor that, you know, were concerned about it, it, I I think it cleans up the the view to the back tremendously.
Has this been approved by historic? Is that required?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's included in the uh, in the permit packet.
I, I think it's cleaning up the appearance of the building. And it's making it more functional for the owner, so it accomplishes two things.
Yeah.
It is very minimal and. It still keeps the look and character of the building, which. You know, every, everybody knows the Wickwood, it's, it's just been a part of this town forever. Uh, and I'm delighted to see that they're taking care of it and bringing it up.
I agree.
Yeah. Sure, there's plenty of that.
Yeah, looks like it. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm delighted that they're doing it.
You guys agree pretty much clear, I think it's rather, rather understandable as to what they're doing now, what's, what areas and.
Yep.
And they.
It seems to be new kitchen, is is that true, new uh, new kitchen as well?
Yes, we submitted a separate permit application for the interior in order to allow the contractor to begin work on that earlier and. Uh, this application is for the exterior enclosure of the stair out of the main floor and down to the basement. The kitchen they were working out of, well, Jeff can tell you more about that than I can, but um.
But.
It's, it's frighteningly small and inadequate.
Wow. Oh, man.
Yeah, and and clearly they're not doing this to add. Add more rooms to the building or to increase their rentable space, they're just making it more functional and better looking, so it's.
That's correct.
And I would hate to see us penalize anyone who wants to keep their building up and improve it.
Yeah.
When the change is so little.
I agree. Well, um. Uh, we really don't have too much more discussion or on that or any questions. It doesn't sound like we, we really do. Uh, I would suggest we review the standards and and go through our findings of facts. Yeah, and move along. So. I see, let's start with the, our first, our first standard, Dick or Dick. Jim?
Jim.
Would you, would you?
I'll be Jim tonight.
Yeah, you'd be Jim tonight. You know, Jim, would you like to start with the the first standard?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first standard is. That strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, height, bulk or density. Would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, render conformity. Or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome? Uh, the comment, I, I agree exactly with what's written here, strict compliance would not prevent the applicant from using the property. As the owner can continue to use the existing structure with non-conforming lot coverage. However, the proposal is a reasonable request as the future conditions will be no more non-conforming. Than the present conditions, even considering the limited increase in square footage. The applicant simply desires to demolish and then rebuild a portion of the existing building. As relates to this case, strict conformance with the ordinance would be unreasonably burdensome. To prevent rebuilding and renovation project for a contributing resource. Uh, rebuilding. As a conforming structure would, would, would require significant structural renovations to the building. I think the standard is, I believe the standard is met.
Okay. All right. Richard, would you like to tackle the second one?
Sure.
I'm sorry, does there any, any, any comments on that or any?
I agree.
Okay. Just want to make sure, sorry.
Uh, standard number two, that a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district. Or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. And did we, uh, did, did you wanted to know what we felt about or to add some? Reasons there at this point?
Yeah.
I was adding reasons for the third one, because I judged that they called upon. But, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, using, using the. I reserve the right to go back and make additional comments.
All right.
Where are we on the second?
Number two there, we're right through.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, is uh, the project would result in a similar degree. Or not really an increase in the degree of non-conformity. And it would result in an overall improvement. Uh, and of course, it's, it's relatively minor in nature. And important to note that it, it doesn't make the building any closer to the property lines than the existing footprint. And so there's, that would be doing justice to the neighboring property in particular. Plus, we noted that this is not visible from the streetscape and uh. So that, that would be why that standard is met.
Agree with that? Anyone else?
I agree, what he said.
Which one were you preparing for, Kate?
Oh, I can do either. I I prepared for both, some of us.
I'm not picking on Richard, I decided. Okay, why don't you do number three?
With some help from Richard. Uh, that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Um, I think that's clearly the case here. The building was constructed in nineteen forty, long before zoning regulations and lot coverage requirements. It's a contributing resource in the historic district and its design and placement on the site are unique based on its historical value to the city. Uh, various additions were constructed over the years, and this project will address deficiencies and improve the overall value of the building as a contributing resource. So I, I believe we can find that the standard is met.
Okay, I think most of us agree with that.
I agree.
Richard, did you have anything to add?
No.
No, you're sure?
It's a long-existing historical structure and built before the zoning ordinances were fully in effect.
Yeah.
All right, I'll do number four. That the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Well, as we've referenced, the, the uh, the year of the construction on the site. Uh, became non-conforming when the zoning ordinance or, or amendments were adopted. And uh, also that the variance request is no relationship to the project cost is. But is necessary for the improvements of the building, which we discussed earlier. Uh, it pretty much falls along the fact that, you know, I believe it does meet, you know, the. Number four, that it's not based on personal financial circumstances. As in some cases where people are trying to maximize, as you said earlier, other. Economies of scale.
Yeah.
So um, I believe. Unless anybody else disagrees, I believe that it did meet number four also.
I agree.
I agree too.
I mean, my. After review of these, uh, it, it appears that. Uh, most. We, we can go into some other discussions here, uh, if we have any. Or if you have some, if not, we would probably suggest we do a motion. To uh. Probably to approve the two points. Uh, two, twenty-seven point seven certain percent lot coverage um over the twenty-five percent. Uh, you know, allowable. So two point seven percent larger. Um, if anyone would like to do that, I would be accommodating to hear a motion one way or the other, but probably to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve lot coverage variance to allow the demolition and reconstruction of a portion of the Wickwood Inn building. At five ten Butler Street with an overall lot coverage of twenty-seven point seven percent. Which is a variance of two point seven percent. Approval of the. Excuse me, of the lot coverage variance is conditioned upon the actual demolition and reconstruction occurring within the same dimensions. As included in the applicant, application materials.
I think that really does cover most of this one, doesn't it?
I would second that.
So we have a, a motion. By Jim Balk and a second by Kate. To approve, uh, that does meet the standards. Four standards is read. And to approve the, the increase. Any discussion? On that, before we go to vote? Sarah, I think we can go to vote for that.
All right. Balk?
Yes.
Uh, upper.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well. The application has been approved and. You can follow up with the, Ryan, our zoning administrator for your next steps. And go from there. We appreciate all your work and good drawings and. All the.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
So, uh, remaining on our agenda tonight, um. Takes us to number seven communications. Um. We have under there, we have a reminder of the zoning board of uh. Member training on May eighteenth. That Ryan has been scheduled for us, I believe it's being presented by. You guys, right, by attorneys? Are you guys going to be putting this on for us?
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, I think Mr. Patterson um. Was planning on taking the lead on it based on some prior training materials that he had put together, um, so, yep.
Okay.
Um, it, it, to that point, training be from three thirty to six thirty, it's on the same um, uh, day as a planning commission meeting. Um, so because you'll have a quorum and you're having training here, I mean, anybody in the publics also will be, you know, welcome to attend if they, they wish to. Learn more about your processes, well, the planning commission members know too, in case they want to.
That's what I was hoping for, yes.
Yep, so we'll make sure that that occurs, and then there's any particular uh topics that that you want covered, or you have specific questions about. Um, please send them my way, email me, um, and Mr. Patterson uh wants to incorporate, you know, uh, what specifically you're looking for. I mean, he's going to have some, some good materials for you, but if there's certain questions you have ahead of time or what things you want to know more about, um, he's happy to incorporate that.
Hey, I think that's a great idea, we're.
No, a question to Ryan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've been working on, it's just a brain dump of things that I would like to have addressed in that meeting.
Yep.
Is it okay for me to send that to all of the members of the committee? Just as thought starters and so that everybody can add to that, so we come away with a consolidated list. That wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act, would it?
We'll refer to your attorney on that one.
You can circulate stuff where you start deliberating back and forth about matters of policy. Um, like starting an exchange where someone is replying and kind of building on things that that might kind of stray towards, um. Where I would get uncomfortable. Um, but if you just add a list of ideas, what should add the rest of the board. Especially when maybe you've got a VCC everyone to avoid. Why all scenario?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think your intent is so that we're all on maybe one list of of items to give to Ryan as opposed to duplicating your.
As, yeah, as opposed to him having to sort through six different lists.
Yeah, and they're all, not all, but we have, we have, end up saying the same thing, maybe, okay, yes.
It's basically just a list of topics, there's no detail. It's. A lot of questions that I have sometimes.
Good, great, thank you.
So we'll, we'll plan on you maybe sending that out to us, we'll take a review, if there's anything you see you want to add. Uh, or you don't think it's worth talking about, let them know and we'll go, we can coordinate and get it to Ryan as soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay, that pretty much, I think, takes care of that one, um. Any, any other GBA comments, any other things we have?
Yeah, I, I have a comment for Jake and Ryan, um. With regard to like this package tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And Sarah or whoever's doing this, um, these are well-prepared packets. Uh, and I appreciate that, um, and this one wasn't contentious, in the past, we've had some that were contentious where the pro and the con were presented. And I appreciate that and I, I want you to know that we recognize the work that that goes into doing this and we appreciate it and it makes our life easier.
Amen. Yeah. We, I think we all support Jim's thoughts on that one.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you, it's a team effort and we have our uh. Planning consultant that that also works on these and in these reviews, um, I'll give you a heads up now, I hope you're all planning on uh being here next month. Uh, and when you have a quorum, um, you're going to have a heavy caseload uh next month, I have at least three applications and a fourth one that's expected probably by the deadline on Monday.
Wow.
Um. A lot has uh been coming this way, so just to kind of prepare your minds for that, we'll have a, we'll have a heavy lift next month, certainly.
Overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we get paid? Should, we should be paid by the application, not. By the meeting. But that would be wrong, but that would be wrong.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay. There we can get some peanuts or something like.
Yeah. That might be able to be arranged.
Yeah. Okay, uh, well, then, um, we, number nine is our public comment portion. That uh, we open up to the public. And at this time. We, we don't have any public left to speak unless. Well, you guys would like to speak, Trent or? Nope. Alright, and nothing online, so in that case. Ledger?
Alright, well, quick voice vote if we could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we could have just a, a quick voice vote to adjourn.
Oh, quick.
Yeah, somebody, a motion.
All in favor for enjoyment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. It did say that right there.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that was good.